Okay, you're live.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining our joint meeting of the year. And I know there's a large number of us on here tonight, and I know there's so much happening this time of year. So thanks so much for everybody for joining us. I think we'll begin, Anne, will you please take role?
Sure, Mayor Amaro Scrums. Okay, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Yeah.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Mr. Schneer. Not here yet, Mr. Supaluck.
Here.
And Ms. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. Cotter. I think I saw him. Sean Cotter here.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Cram is here.
Here.
Ms. Cooper. And Mr. Deschler.
Here.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Miller. Not here yet, and Mr. Nye is not here yet. Okay.
Thank you, Anne. As we move forward, Jenny, will you please put up the agenda? Okay, as we're talking, so thank you again for joining us. This is really an important meeting. Really, an opportunity for us to spend some time together after what has been, of course, a challenging but an important year. So I want to begin by thanking Jenny and her staff and all the chairs of the boards and commissions for their work in preparation for this, and for Councilmember Fox, who helped work to put this agenda together. We have a few things that we're going to do, and Jenny Roush is going to be the emcee largely for our discussion this evening. Based on feedback with what folks said they wanted to do, Jenny's going to give a brief overview, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss sort of some of the major council policy updates, which she provided in advance, as well as the 2020 goals and objectives of council. So she'll start with that. And then really, the meat of our time together this evening, we'll be hearing from all of you. The different chairs of the boards and commissions, I know, reached out to all members and said, what are the two top subjects that you would like to discuss this meeting? Because obviously, there's a lot of us here tonight, and we really wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to do that. So the board chairs pulled together the feedback and selected two items. They're going to be presenting, but it's certainly a joint conversation. So we would like everybody's feedback and input during that session. And then Jenny is gonna help us conclude by giving an update on the 2035 Dublin 2035 Framework Plan and your important role in that. And then we'll just do a little bit of housekeeping and recognition at the end. So that's our agenda for this evening. I'm going to turn it over now to Jenny. Jenny, thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor DeRosa, and welcome, everyone. So excited to see everybody virtually and be together. I know we were together a little over a year ago in person, so it's a little different format. We appreciate everybody's flexibility moving forward, but really excited to hear from everybody tonight and have this opportunity to meet and talk through what's been going on and what your thoughts are. And again, what how we're moving forward, and just again acknowledge your great work and flexibility this year. I think that's the key word of the year. So with that, I am going to just talk through, and again, I did provide some materials just for your reference and a little more information, because I'm not going to go into a great amount of detail tonight just because I want to make sure the majority of the time is reserved for your conversation. But just talking through some of the, you know, updates and things that council has been working on with the help of staff, and then obviously, all of you board and commission members. And then I'm going to review council's goals for last year and just how that sort of played into all of our work moving forward this past year, and then again, as we move into '21. So the first part that I'm going to review are, again, the council policy updates. So the first item on here is our code amendment status. So we had a number of code amendments that were brought forward this past year, and we're working through those. A number of them were approved, and the two major ones that were approved here towards the end of the year were related to short-term rentals and how those are regulated in the city. Council approved an amendment to that, which takes effect here pretty shortly, and we'll be looking into that. But that requires registration of anyone wanting to rent their homes on a short-term basis, as well as registration for that, and then restrictions of timeframe. So that's one of our most recent updates, as well as property maintenance. We had a code amendment that looked at vacant properties and how those would be regulated and make sure that the aesthetics of those are maintained in a manner that's consistent with existing occupied properties, so that those are, again, kept to that high standard that we expect in the timeframes and making sure that code enforcement has what they need to enforce that. And then we have a number of outstanding amendments that we're working through and hoping to bring forward with the goal here at the beginning of the year. The first of those being the historic code and the guidelines, which the goal of those was to remove those from the Bridge Street and then update the code and the guidelines accordingly to match council's perspective and recommendation and direction on that. So we've worked through that over the past year and a half or so to bring that forward. So that should be coming forward here very shortly to Planning Commission and then the City Council as well. So a lot of great work and effort and public input for that particular amendment. And then temporary signs, we've been working through an amendment at council's direction to ensure that the code matches or aligns with recent court cases and in the regulation of temporary signs. So that meets the expectations in terms of our sign ordinance. And then we have two other items that we're working toward. They are the definition and use-specific standards related to specialty hospitals. We've had a number of inquiries in the last year related to that and wanting to understand how we would move forward with that in terms of a code amendment to address the right location, right standards related to those particular uses, as well as then also adding an amended file development process in the Bridge Street District, which would allow for a more streamlined review for projects that are existing buildings and sites, so that they don't have to go through such an arduous process, but making sure that there is a public review process for that that allows them to make those modifications in a way that meets the code. So those two, the hospital, specialty hospitals and the AFDP process for the Bridge Street, we're working through the provision of those code language, and then we'll be bringing that forward to Planning Commission and Council. Then the second item here on our list is the Historic District Task Force. And council appointed a really bright, various group of individuals and residents and business owners and stakeholders with the task of looking at the historic district and understanding what the issues are and getting, and having an opportunity to be educated and talk through about what those are, and then ultimately, making some recommendations to council. So we were going to try to do that at the December meeting for council, but that ran a little long. So we wanted to make sure we had a really great opportunity, and we'll be bringing that forward here at their January meeting. So they'll be bringing forward their recommendations, which include the update to the area plan related to the historic districts, again, pulling that out of the Bridge Street District and making that its own standalone area plan again. And then also looking at the notion of there being some type of larger management of the historic district and what that means. So council will have their opportunity to weigh in on their recommendations and provide some guidance moving forward. That's been a really great project to be a part of. The third thing on our related to Regional Housing Study, which was conducted by MORPC since beginning in August of 2019. So looking at trends and studying the housing market within the central Ohio area and providing some recommendations and strategies for that. So Dublin was one of many communities and entities that took part in that study. And the final draft of that was provided in the fall of this year with, again, recommendations and strategies for how to address, you know, housing market in the central Ohio area with the anticipation of there being a presentation to council on what those outcomes were. We're anticipating that, I think, at the second January meeting. So to have an opportunity to hear that firsthand, what those recommendations are, and then what that means for Dublin and how we would potentially incorporate those strategies. We also have been working on looking at residential development patterns. We've had a number of single-family developments come forward and lots of discussion with Planning Commission and Council about what those items and how the development patterns for those particular developments align with the vision for residential development within the city. So wanting to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss with council and Planning Commission, and we have taken that to Planning Commission on two occasions, just to get their initial input, again, in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, design standards, the characteristics, again, that we really want to see in our residential neighborhoods as we build out some of these last residential areas within the city to make sure that that's meeting our expectations. So we anticipate being back in front of Planning Commission with some additional information and potential recommendations and next steps here in the next couple of months. And then the final item under council, these updates are, is related to the fee in lieu of, which was an amendment that council approved at the beginning of 2020 to look at, in the Bridge Street District, how park land fees are calculated. So it used to be a static number. I really wanted to take a more comprehensive approach and require appraisals as it relates to park land, so that it's really reflecting in real time all the factors that go into the land costs and provision of park land. So that was approved at the beginning of this year, as I mentioned, to address those concerns. So that's sort of our big-picture items that we've been working through this year that relates to the direction from council. And then in terms of council goals, I included in your reference material, again, for you to read at your leisure. And again, we can discuss that. I'm happy to answer any questions about either one of these slides that I've talked through, but really wanting you to understand what council's goals have been for the past year and how that relates to our work as employees, as board and commission members. They're all really very tethered together. So in February of 2020, council reaffirmed and reviewed their goals, and the ones here on the screen are the ones that council really wanted to direct their attention to and staff's attention to as we moved through this year. So again, looking at the fiscal strength and sustainability of the community, so really implementing that, is implementing economic development strategy that was approved in 2019 and making sure that, you know, we're ensuring the fiscal health of the community and providing that stability and sustainability for the years to come. The second one is becoming a connected community. So looking at how we can, you know, use smart city technology as well as broadband services. So how can we really connect our residents and our businesses in a meaningful way and become that most connected community in the United States? And then the third is innovating and enhancing our city services using data and analytics. So how can we improve our city services and the provision of those using data, using analysis to streamline our process, to bring forward projects and customer service and operations in a way that is innovative, but also really making sure that it's enhancing everyone's quality of life as well. So how do we use data and be able to measure that in real time? So we've been, all the division directors have been really working on that this year and demonstrating that in terms of numbers, but also in terms of our process. And then the last thing is the Dublin 2035, I called it a community plan update, but it's actually the framework, which is really, you know, looking at where do we want to be in 2035 and looking at what that framework looks like and how do we guide the community from a visioning perspective? And I'll get into that here at the end of your discussion, just as Vice Mayor DeRosa indicated, just how we all sort of fit into the big piece of the puzzle here. But that was, again, council's fourth goal for the year. And again, we've really taken that on and are bringing some opportunities forward for everybody to be engaged as part of that. So that's my quick synopsis of our updates. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, we can turn it over to the group discussion. But again, just wanted you to all be aware of all the big, exciting things that we have done and are working towards this past year. Okay, so with that, our next item then is council, or excuse me, chairperson's reporting out. So in terms of our order, we had the Chair of Architecture Review Board, Kathy Bryan, would be the first one to talk through her items, and then Marty Cooper, who is the chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then Rebecca Call, who is the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Kathy, with that, I'll start with you, if you're up for it. And I can leave this up here if you want, or is it easier to see everybody's face? I can take it down if that's easier.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, all right, well, we'll leave it up for now, just so you have your points of reference, if that's okay. Okay.
Sure, thank you. Thank you. And if my fellow ARB members would please jump in on these items as well. So the first is the overall vision for historic district. Over the past two years, we've been receiving an increasing number of requests for demolition. And in some cases, they're warranted, but for demolition, and then the replacing structure is significantly larger. Our fear is that the historic district is going to lose its historic status, that it's becoming economically much less diverse. So these are the things that we, we're really, we're losing a lot of our green space in terms of yards. So we're, I think that some of the other items I've seen, I think we may be addressing some of this in terms of vision, but this is one of our great concerns. Also, and I think that's going to be addressed by Marty, is, you know, what? We're not, I don't think we're real clear on the appeals process and the communication around that. So I'm looking forward to getting a better handle on that. If someone doesn't like our decision, and then it goes to appeal process, appeals process, what's all entailed there and what kind of communication comes back to us? So that's the first item. The second is addressing the vacancies and the rapid decline of South High Street. It was bad pre-COVID, but it's, I think that a number of other businesses have shuttered, and it's looking very, very sad. So we're interested in what the vision is for that and if there can be any kind of economic incentive and support for small business owners in the South High Street Commercial District in particular. Those are our two items.
So Kathy, this is Kathy. How are you guys addressing the first item on that list? When you said that size is an issue and you're getting applications, how are you guys managing through that now?
Well, right now, because the code hasn't changed, it allows, because it's covered under Bridge Street, it's allowing for larger structures. So we need that code to get changed so that it can, this footprint will be a little smaller. So I think that's sort of one of our stumbling blocks right now. Amy, Sean, anything else you want to add?
Okay, I think you've covered it, but clearly, we're trying to keep everybody inside the code, but the code allows for quite a large footprint at the moment. So, I mean, I think we've tried to force the issue somehow on the lot coverage smaller, but code is at a certain spot where you get to a spot where it's left. I mean, they're inside the code, so it's more difficult to try to force them to another spot. But we're starting to see 3,000 and 4,000 square foot houses on some of these lots. They fit inside the code, but certainly comparatively, they are, they can look a bit out of place next to some of the houses from earlier in the historic district.
And this is Amy. My only other thought was, it's been really hard to tell an applicant they can't make a house look a certain way when they've kind of replicated what already had been passed or what already exists there. So there are already some very large houses taking up like the full length of a lot, and it's really hard to say, well, you can't do it when they point to two that are right next to them that are just that big. So I think that's just another hurdle.
I think that that, once the code changes, we at least have the legal framework to address that.
Your lot coverage at present is what, 50%? 45%?
I think it's 50.
And I think, I think one of the big problems is the new houses approach that 50 or at 50, but all of the old houses are way, way under that. So there's a big discrepancy. You have these existing houses that are maybe at 30% or 20% lot coverage, but then these new houses have been allowed to be built at the 50, and they just look gigantic. But again, it's hard to tell, and while the code says you can have that much, and there's another house right next to it that looks just like that, it's hard to say no.
The control you have is if it's truly a historic structure, then perhaps you have more leeway because you've got protections for that. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But many of these now are being demoed because of the lack of, let's say, lack of upkeep over the years. So they become, they become essentially either dangerous or unable to be fixed. So we end up in demo, and then they end up in the, inside the code of having a structure that is certainly out of place with the structure that was there before.
So the structure they demoed might have covered 25% of the lot, but they brought in a new structure that covers 50% of the lot, which is in code. And the lot next to them or the one across the street did the same thing four, five years ago or even a couple of years ago, and that's what's making it hard, because there's more and more of these bigger houses.
So the two things.
Two quick things on that is, one, hopefully, the property maintenance code updates are going to help with the issue that Sean is talking about in terms of just getting dilapidated to the point beyond repair. Secondly, you know, you probably have different areas that have different requirements. So maybe if you're right on High Street, the lot coverage might make more sense because, a greater coverage might make more sense because, you know, you're on the main thoroughfare. And typically, those, you know, buildings go building to building, or, you know, at least for a portion of it. I think probably where your difficulty is, is more on the secondary and tertiary streets.
Right. But I think, again, once we get the code in place, it'll add some level of restriction.
Thanks for working on that. I know, I know, we'll afford to see him that.
Can I ask a question of ARB? Do you feel that the code is addressing demolition? Your decision to demolish or not demolish adequately with the new code guidelines? Or do you think it's still, is there anything you want council to know?
I think it will, between that and the property maintenance. So it doesn't get to the point of needing to be demolished. I think those two things will definitely help.
Okay.
Yeah, I think property maintenance will help a lot. That will keep, I mean, some of them are maybe past where they're going to be, but now I think we can stay on that from a code standpoint, from the compliance folks. It'll be easier to keep on top of some of the ones that look like they're tipping over the point and try to keep them where they are.
Some of them literally tipping over.
Yeah.
Do we have a sense of just, I would, I'm going to call it the balance of the areas that the group thinks that will potentially be redeveloped down in that or could be in current state? I mean, I agree, when you drive down, you really have a different feel coming in with some of those larger houses. It's noticeable now. It may not have been noticeable. You guys certainly noticed it, right? You're highly tuned to that, but it is. Do we have a sense of just sort of the percentage of, that are sort of leaning in that way today?
I'm sorry, leaning in?
Well, meaning, are these lots that are going to be redeveloped? Are we approaching the end of that? Or do we think this is, you know, sort of what is the size of this?
I think there's, I think we're pretty much have reached, on High Street, I think that, I think they've already addressed most of them. I think Riverview Street, especially South River, well, both South and North Riverview Street, those are the ones that I'm very concerned about right now, because the, there's one demolition that's already occurred, and it was totally justified. But the house that's going to go in, it is almost 4,000 square feet. There's a couple of other small houses on South Riverview, and then the houses on North Riverview that I think are also in jeopardy. I think Franklin Street's pretty stable right now. That's almost a different area.
So Kathleen, you know, initially, you were talking about the code allows for, and so you're kind of between this rock and a hard place. Amy, I think it was you who said, you know, it's hard to tell them no when their next-door neighbor or when they meet code. Have you thought about, is it, you know, we have a couple of triggers that we can pull. We have, of course, the lot coverage that's been touched on quite a few times, but we also have setbacks and where those building envelopes are. So, you know, Mayor Amaro Scrums talked about High Street being different and usually set further back, but, you know, that 50% lot coverage, whereas the secondary and tertiary streets may not allow for that. Have you thought about, is this just a 50% coverage issue? Or is this a combination of setback plus coverage?
Setback has been an issue, and it has been addressed again with the new code. And also, the current code allows us to say, look at the neighbors. And on Riverview Street, both north and south, they're set back a little bit. So we had one applicant who wanted to build, like, within five feet of the road on Riverview, and we told them no, because all of the other houses were set back considerably. So we've got that lever to pull.
Do you, do you also have that, about that, looking at the adjacencies and proportionally adjusting, do you also have that relative to scale and lot coverage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the new code does propose a building footprint maximum, too. So not just lot coverage, but how much of your lot then can be covered with a building? So again, with the board's guidance, we definitely have included that within the new draft code that's coming forward. And that was also after some study of what's existing out there. I mean, there is a variety of lot sizes and home sizes, but we really tried to use the data of what's out there and what the desired characteristics are, and we tailored the code to meet that as best we could with, again, board input and lots of discussion, actually. Same with, yeah, just the lot coverage in general has been, is proposed to be reduced from the current 50%, and then that, yeah, the building coverage as well. So I think those factors alone will be really helpful.
And Jenny, do you think, so part of this sounds like we might have had, we might have had some standards in place that allowed a proportionately bigger right feeling structure to be built, and, you know, adverse to the, adverse to the adjacencies. Do we think the new stipulations start to rein that in? Do we think the new stipulations start to rein that in and cause a certain measure of proportionate kind of building when new?
I do, and maybe Kathy can chime in on that. And I think having the code be more stringent about that is going to really help the board feel more comfortable with saying no and holding the line because currently, under the Bridge Street code, they can ask for a waiver, and there's allowances for that, and there is unfortunately precedent for that. And again, the guidelines also help bolster that argument as well, that it really needs to maintain that historic character. So yes, to answer your question, I think the new code does.
Well, I think in light of schedule for things, I think you all are working on code updates, right? You're going to address this and the updates that you'll bring forward. So, good. I just, I don't want us to spend all our time because you're working on those updates, and they're going to come forward. I just want to make sure we keep, I want to leave plenty of time for Planning Commission as well to talk about things that they would like.
Sure. What about South Riverview Street, or not South Riverview, South High Street's businesses? Has anybody walked down there lately? It's kind of sad.
I have, and to me, it was pre-COVID. It was heading that direction long before that. And clearly, North High Street has gotten a lot of love, and there's a lot of energy on North High Street. If we can move some of that energy to South High, I'm all for that. I think it's going to take some financial creativity to make that happen. And to some extent, maybe some property owners becoming a little bit more philanthropic, if you will, and willing to bend a little bit. You know, there's, there's certainly, it's not hard to make money in the city of Dublin in real estate. How much money you make, I think, is, you know, the question. And so I'm certainly open to talking with various parties on financial models that might work to incentivize, whether it's discounted rent to retail tenants that are coming in there, or other incentives for property owners. So it's definitely on my, it's on my radar, anyway.
Thank you. Well, it's worse post, it's worse now than it was even pre-COVID.
And I would think you need to be a little careful with your lot coverage on if some of, along High Street, some commercial buildings were built, you know, in whatever update you do. You know, the lot coverage along is going to have to be level so that it, you know, you have a critical mass of enough things going on. So that'd be something for y'all to consider when you're doing your code update.
I'd like to make a suggestion to Jenny. The Historic District Task Force is presenting to council their recommendations, but I think it would be important for them to also present to the Architectural Review Board at one of their meetings.
They do.
Maybe they've already planned that, Jenny, I don't know. But I think some of the incentives that you're talking about, Kathy, and that we all want may be in there, but it also might be food for thought to discuss with them during a meeting, you know, how they came to that and whether or not your input from the commission could enhance the recommendations, actually, possibly, as they go forward. So I do think those heads put together is a good idea.
Yeah, they did present that to the ARB, just for their initial input. So again, I think this is another good indication of we're all sort of aligning on these topics as they move forward. So that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you for our time.
Thank you, Kathy. So then next up, I have Marty Cooper, and you're, you want me to put the slide back up with your topic, or are you comfortable?
Hi, yes. Honestly, our topic is really very recent experience, and it's really the only one that we've experienced this year where we probably need to have a, have maybe a change looked at, or at least this particular area. It occurs, it has occurred four or five times, and Zach, you may have the statistics even better at your fingertips, but at least four or five times, four times in this last year, where people have come in for the Oak Park Development, which is off of Quarry, Highland Quarry Road, and they have asked for variance from the setback requirements for construction in the outdoor space. The property owners that we have faced have either already, we had two kinds. We had two properties that had already had the work done, and when zoning had gone out and looked at it, found out they were actually encroaching within the space. So they had to seek a variance from us so that they wouldn't be in violation. And then we've had two this year, and I believe one a couple of years ago, where they wanted to build on the back or side of their house back and have the outdoor space, the outdoor patios encroach into the setback requirements for the rear. And the variances were granted. The rear of these houses in particular are on the outer boundary of the development, and so they were backing up into undeveloped area behind, actually farmland right now and part of that, close to where the Metro Park is. And Zach, I don't have, I should have asked you, I guess, to prepare a drawing to kind of demonstrate this for everyone. But it's just, the problem is, is that we are anticipating either having more requests and/or having additional variances being granted because they have found, they've been found to be in violation. And the violations seem to be coming from basically the development people not following their own planning, approved planning. Zach, or if any of my board members would have anything they'd like to add to this, that would be great, but it speaks to really one of the issues that was raised earlier by Jenny. That's one of the topics, which has to do with the future residential areas in the city and how they, and making sure that they are compliant with the citywide goals. Because in this case, what we are have, or in these cases, what we are having is a approved plan of PUD that is not complying or seeking variances, and not without valid reasons because of the way the setbacks and the way the properties are developed. The houses are quite large and set close and close to all the property lines, to be honest with you.
Marty, can I ask you a question? It's one of the things that we're talking about, so I want to be really clear how this is trickling down to you. So you're saying that the building's footprint is so large on these properties, and the setbacks are so narrow that when they want to put in a patio, they're either forced into encroaching, or they have no room for a patio. Is that what you're saying?
Essentially, especially when the setback's like a 25-foot setback for an open area or 20-foot setback for an open area, and they only have 30 feet behind them. The house is quite large, and a 10 by 10-foot patio will look odd, to say the least.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how they were being proposed when the PUD was being approved initially, you know, and if the schematics of the houses were just generally smaller or, in my opinion, though, what the request have been, and in my votes reflect this, that I agreed that the applicants for variance should be approved because the kind of structure that was going to result was just even inconsistent with the development itself as a whole and inconsistent with viable use outside.
That's really-
Well, I was just going to say, I think that's even been, been more so maybe this year because so many people are at home and spending their time at home or developing their outside space at home.
I appreciate you bringing this up simply because it's a planning and zoning issue when we talk about density, lot coverage, setbacks, and PUDs. So thanks, Marty. I'll let others talk, but I wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
I would say, I think it's more of an architecture problem than anything. The architecture of the homes are proposed where they, you know, the development text needs to mandate that there is an allowable space for that kind of development, and they need to design the house in a way that is appropriate to allow that space. You know, it has to do with where you put the door out the kitchen, you know, all of those kinds of things that will determine where the appropriate outdoor space is going to be. And I hope the Planning Commission folks are listening close to this one because, you know, as I said, you know, density can be the problem. It isn't always the problem. It's normally an architecture problem in site layout, where they just try to get, you know, they have a lot of thought where they put the house on the lot, and they just put them all on the street. And then when it comes time for outdoor space, it created a problem. And so I think that falls back on the development text to make sure that there is a thoughtful consideration of future outdoor uses.
One other comment I would add is that it seems like when they are doing it, these particular houses that are asking for the variances, they have an ability to at least do something in their backyard. I would observe, and this has to do with really going back to the percentage of the lot that can be in the footprint. From my, from my observation of that community, people across the street from the houses that we have been concerned with, for instance, their houses allow no backup. There's no encroachment area at all because they are basically built right up on what is clearly a surface water drainage capture pond. And so there's not, you're not going to be able to seek a variance to have a 15-foot patio out there because your 15 feet is going to start into the slope of the surface water drainage area. So the property owners that are along the, the roads, the road that we have seen in this particular development that have sawed it, and as I said, there's about five, they at least had somewhere to go. I mean, in my opinion. And so that's just one of the, I feel just one of the overarching concerns and how it may relate to Planning and Zoning Commission, the code changes, and the space, the quantity of vacant space being required.
Jenny-
I mean, the homes, the homes are beautiful, very expensive homes, beautiful homes.
Jenny, and maybe Claudia, I wonder if, I guess I'm going to, I think Oak Park was done with sort of different, built with different principles, written with different principles. I'm going to the conservation design, which is, it's intentionally, and I could be wrong, I was not around for it, but where I'm going is, I wonder if BZA would benefit from an understanding of some of those principles at some point so that, so that when, as they're fielding these, these concerns or variances, they might better understand them. I think, Martha, if I'm, if I'm saying anything, and again, forgive me, I might be speaking out of turn, Jenny, Claudia, please, please do correct me if I'm wrong. The conservation design intentionally had a little bit of a tighter lot relative to then giving back, granting a wealth of green space around this community. So there's a little bit of a different sort of residential design to it. Now, Chris, I also agree with you that it comes down to the architecture. And again, hearsay at this point, but I believe I've, I've heard Claudia and Jenny both say that a wealth of the owners, when they chose their lot and when they chose their architecture, chose a substantial amount of lot coverage, i.e., to the, the architecture may or may not have been a problem, but they were making those choices previously. Now, these, these owners who are coming to you now may or may not be those same owners who originally set that up, but there was choices made along the way relative to the rules that were in place that are now yielding sort of people bumping into these, into these new stipulations. I think all that context would probably be fruitful relative to the issues that you all are fielding.
You know, Mark, I think you really made good points. Unfortunately, we've heard some of the owners during the application process indicated the builder was being dishonest and stating that they could do whatever they wanted in the back, and then the builder would not allow for certain things. They changed, I think, one of the ones, the garages, they had to alter, and then it ended up making, it was a five-feet garage alteration that the builder did unilaterally, and that impacted the five feet that the owner needed for the setback. And so that's had, that's come up a couple of times. I know City Council, and I don't know if P&amp;Z knows, they're having problems with this owner, they've had problems with this owner. So just hearing from what some of the, the current, I mean, the builder, excuse me, hearing what from some of the owners have been saying, and then now, coupled with, you know, knowing what's going on with the builder from the perspective of having issues with the city on some of the areas, I just think there's a little more, I understand what you're saying from conservation play, but I just think there needs to be, it sounds like there was not enough honesty on the front end with some of the original builders or the original owners, when the builder was describing where the lot was, you know, where the house is going to go, that's a big deal, explaining to them if they put their house in a location, or, you know, your setback's going to be different, the no-build zone's going to be a little different. I just, I don't think there was that transparency on the front end. And we're seeing it now from a lot of the owners, as Marty said, that are bordering some of the reserved areas that exist in that neighborhood.
Are the deeds stamped with buildable area? So if I, you know, if I go to a title agency today and close on a home and get a copy of the deed in my paperwork, does it have a build envelope and your easements and your setbacks and everything? Is that something that we've done in the city of Dublin or in the county?
The plat would reflect that, the plat would have that document. Go ahead, Claudia.
Claudia, we can't hear you. You're pretty jumbled, I'm afraid.
Jenny, you want to take over that? I think you're aware of what Claudia is saying. She just has a poor internet next or something.
Yeah, yeah. So in the end, I think it, what she, what Claudia was indicating was as part of the zoning, or excuse me, as part of a building permit review, that zoning would be included as part of that. So we would see that and have the opportunity to talk that through and help people navigate that. And then again, she was saying that as part of your survey that you would get when you would close on your home, you would have all your setbacks, easements, all those, that information would be delineated on that survey. So you should have that. So-
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand from a homeowner perspective, what ammunition do they have? What education do they have in knowing what they bought, how they bought it, what state it was in? And regardless of who's being dishonest or who's being misleading, what is the, what is the truth, the source of truth that I can rely on? Yes, I can contact the city, but do I have something proactively given to me when I buy my home that allows me to make better decisions later?
Can I comment on that? I think these are really, really good points being made. I really appreciate this. I think we have a problem where the builders want to put as big a house on a small, and as many houses on a small piece of land. And I think us on P&amp;Z have realized the struggle that we go through. It is on your deed, okay? And, but how many people look at the deed? If you look at a deed, your easements are on there, the size of your lot, the building line is on there, all that is readily accessible through the Franklin County or Delaware or- through the Franklin County or Delaware or Union County sites. So I, I, I think that, I think it behoves us to work harder with, with staff and make sure we do have that property. We're going through some right now. I can't mention the cases where they're putting a little too much on, on too little. And, and, and it, it, it happens. We, we've seen it for years and years. And this development you were talking about on Highland Croy, I remember that when I was there and they said, oh, these people don't want big lots. They don't want to add anything. They want to go to the common area. They're empty nesters and so on. And I think we can't buy that. I think that maybe zoning appeals has to turn down some of these and, 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 and instead of letting them encroach into the common area, because then we're going to have the same problem. We just, we just heard from, from air, from the historical board where one guy gets it done, then everybody wants it done. So I think that this is a great point. And I think we've got to work harder with staff and, and, and find those things out when we approve the PUDs. Thank you.
We'd just like to clarify also that in the case of this particular development, the only case is that we have considered, have involved properties on the outer perimeter that currently abut a non undeveloped area. And the setbacks were for, to get into within the 20 foot boundary. So the setback is 20 feet on the back of the lot. And maybe the whole back of the lot is 30, 35 feet. And they would maybe want to put in 15 feet from the house out. My observation separately in this community was the same question could not, or the same request, in my opinion, could not be considered for the people across the street because it's clear that they don't have any, if you will, there's no, they would be literally in, I guess, restricted areas. And so in this case, I think that's where the distinction was made. And because, and now unfortunately, because we have found out that other people had actually built into that area without prior approval, this was where the variance process became the recommended procedure for them to correct their situation. And we supported that. The staff supported that. And we supported that as well. So I agree that some of these, like you said, they sell it as they don't want any yard and they don't want, they want to use the common areas. And that's true. I think they're still not wanting to have a yard per se, but they have wanted to have a patio space to do outdoor activities on their own property. And maybe that is a result of our year of COVID or not, but that's where they, where these outside, the perimeter property owners will have an advantage over the internal ones.
Well, I think this has been a helpful discussion and helps inform our, our discussion moving forward with the residential development standards. And again, looking at that baseline and bringing that forward. So thank you, Marty and BZI for, for sharing that and your thoughts on the good discussion on that topic. I think again aligns with what, what we're already thinking, but really puts some specifics to that. So that's really helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca to talk through the issues or ideas that Planning Commission wanted to bring.
Thanks Jenny. So our two items kind of dovetail the previous discussion. We, as a commission, have struggled with some cookie cutter developments as of late. And the developers coming forward and saying, you know, people don't want yards. They want larger homes on smaller lots. And they want the maximum lot coverage, the minimum setbacks, the required but no more open space and no open space amenities. And so we are looking for some consensus and some direction for when those applications come forward. And it's the same application that we've seen three or four or five times already in the year. And they are nothing spectacular homes with required minimum open space, with required minimum everything. And we have the luxury of having Jane on our commission. So she serves as our conduit from council and kind of keeps us honest there. But we, and having Mark on the board is helpful with his architectural background because he does bring in some of the, some of the architectural acumen and challenges our board appropriately. And so we are looking for open space, a little bit easier, open space. If we had a point system and a recommendation on minimum amenities within open space, we do thank you to council talk about, you know, the three to one, it can't be counted as open space unless it is less than three to one. So more of a square usable parcel. But usable amenities and what makes open space engaging and a, a place to come and congregate. And we have some vague definition and we are not looking for a, this is, these are all the things open space must have, but just a little bit more of what council's vision is for open space as we fill in some of these last remaining parcels. And then of course, as we redevelop some additional parcels. So that's on the open space side. And then, you know, I think everybody fed into the discussion that we were talking about with the postage stamps. We hear over and over again from the developers, people don't want yards. And then we hear people say, you know, nowhere in Dublin can I get a house with a yard? Nobody's selling. And so it's this competition between developers saying, no, we know what people want. And people that we're, you know, not rubbing elbows with, we're six feet away from elbows, saying, you know, Dublin doesn't really have what I'm looking for right now. So looking for a little bit of direction and consensus among mostly council on what you're looking for as we fill in these last remaining parcels and the applications that you've seen thus far, the positives that you've seen and the negatives, what, how we can do a better job on PCC to make your jobs easier.
I think I would just add that it's supposed to be tense and it's supposed to be hard. And it's kind of can be bare knuckled. And the two of you really need to be at odds. And I don't say that lightly, but it's really designed to be that way. You know, you are essentially in a court of law and you have the, you know, and the defense. And, you know, that doesn't mean that you treat one another poorly. I am not insinuating that in any way, shape or form. But of course they're going to get all they can. Profit is not a four letter word. And that is, that is their objective. So you have two different objectives. High quality, architectural, easing, aesthetic, value add to the community. Okay? They want to take that value, right? Kind of aggressively claim that value as their own and get in. And so I, I guess, the only, the only hope I can be to you is that it is okay to say clarity is of the utmost importance. To say it isn't interesting enough, or I don't like the way that it's laid out, or, you know, I, I hope planning people plug your ears, staff for a minute. It's okay to make suggestions and say, I could support this if, you know, if these lots, if the, if the open space was in a more central usable place, if the architecture, if every street had the exact building setbacks so that when you drove down the street, it didn't look like a wall. You know, to be very specific and to say, these materials are good, these materials are not good. I would like to see these architectural details. And that doesn't mean you design it for them. But I think it's, I think we tend to sometimes say, I'd just like to see them interesting. And we don't talk about relief and textures and articulation and all of it make architecture better. And so they come back and they put another window on the front of the house. They're like, oh, this is way more architecturally interesting. And now we've wait, we've wasted 45 to 60 or to 90 days and we had a window and what we wanted was six feet of relief. And we didn't articulate, we, maybe we weren't clear enough in our request. I, I, just from my time on being on Planning Commission, that, those are some of the things that I...
So one clarifying question. When we're looking at applications, a lot of times when we're seeing them, they are the, you know, Chris you brought out, that they're the ones that are going to make them the most money. They cost the least amount to build and it gives the value and people can benefit from all of the Dublin amenities that somebody else has already paid for. So that's where we start. I guess what I'm looking for are, are there certain hills that you want us to die on? And are the, aren't as important? Because we get to challenge the open space. We get to challenge all of the particulars. We get to challenge the architecture. We get to challenge the feel. We get to challenge everything. But if that, if we're always challenging everything, are there some things that are more important to council than others?
I can only answer that for me. Oh, go ahead, Andy.
So, well, I guess my, my initial reaction to a developer wanting to build a lot of houses on a few lots is, of course they do. That's just what they normally do. But when they say, well, this is what the market wants, I don't know whether that's true or not. And I guess I would want to explore the Morpsy Regional Housing Study or other housing studies here in central Ohio or nationally to see what, what, what's the truth? What do people really want? And I think it's a pretty good goal for the 2035 community plan for us to explore when we, when we're looking at housing. Housing needs change. And so to assume that, you know, we always want large lots and smaller houses within those lots. The market does change and we probably should change with it. So again, my initial reaction is pushback. And that, to me, that is the hill to die on, is the density issue. But, but maybe it shouldn't be. Maybe, maybe the market really is looking for that. And maybe the new developments in Dublin really should be that more, I guess, trendy or market serving sector.
So one call out here, one of the interesting items that developers bring up to the commission is we want an affordable product. We want an affordable product in Dublin. We want to build these condos that cost $400,000. Well, everyone who lives in Dublin knows you can, may, may not be super easy, but you can buy a single family home for $400,000. And so if the idea is we need a diversity of housing products to meet all of the demand and price points, but we're always building to the price point regardless of what the product is, again, another struggle that we're faced with. Jane, did you have anything to add? I kind of covered that purposely.
No, Rebecca, I think, I think you, you nailed a lot of it. The problem we are faced with is that in code, and they do come very strongly saying that they want, they want, and they won't give you the size of the house, but, but, and they call it an empty nester, but in the end it isn't. And it's never affordable. It goes between four and $600,000. So the only thing that I would point to, and I know you've all heard me say this, and I would like council's comment on it, you have to go back to the vision principles. You have to go back to the community plan, which is getting updated. And you have to look at what quality looks like historically within Dublin. Muirfield has patio homes that are tight together and, and they're just beautiful and they're timeless. The Villas of Ballantrey are the same. It's just that the trend is now to stack them. And I hate to say this, but I said it and I'll say it again, like a mobile home park right next to each other and call that quality development. It's, it's hard to make that look beautiful. So this, planning and zoning does need council's permission to push the, I believe, to, to ask for a better design. And we are going to study, we are going to start studying, it's one of the things in 2021, studying what our residents do want, asking some of them in empty nester communities, what are you looking for in open space amenities? So I do think we need some strong direction. I think council should talk about this, what the design looks like. So.
Planning Commission, if I could tell Planning Commission what my hill to die on was, it would be architecture and materials. You have fantastic architecture and high quality materials where density is going to be less of a problem if, if it's designed well. And, you know, anyone that comes in that wants to use a thin material, fill in the blanks, thin whatever, you know, that's, that's a crisis. Anything, you know, the synthetic, any of your metal products, any of your, you know, even a lot of the hardy composite products, a failure. You go over to taller flats and you look at the hardy products used on there are failing quickly. Like materials and architecture, those are the hills to die on. And I think the Planning Commission needs to understand when these developers are coming in and they're asking for a PUD, automatically you have just put the, the code on the shelf. There is no code. So don't come in here with a PUD and say, I meet the code. No, this is a PUD. Code is off the table. And now we're going to talk about my building architecture.
Can I?
In addition to that, I think the other thing is context. And I, I think one of the challenges is we have to, what I would call it, zoom out and zoom in. So fit within a neighborhood or fit within the context is so important, right? We started the evening with that, right? These are these absolutely gorgeous new developments. Do they fit? And I think one of the challenges, and during my time on planning and zoning, one of my requests to staff was, would you give us the context, right? We were doing a fair bit of Bridge Park discussion at the time. Will you zoom out for us? Will you show us what this looks like when I'm going down the hill or up the hill or across the, what the view looks like across the river? Because that, that is going to be also very, very important. So it may be too dense for some things, but perfectly fine in others. And I, I think that putting it in the overall context, and I think it's perfectly fine to request that. I'd like to see the surrounding areas and more than just a blueprint type of a look. And let's talk about the fit and function. So, you know, those are the things that I think create the sense of what makes Dublin Dublin, right? That the green space, the outline. So architecturally huge important, but fit and function equally important. And we can't think about that with just within the development. And I think that sometimes if we can zoom out and ask ourselves that, and again, we're going to zoom out at 30,000 foot for the, you know, for all of Dublin for the 2035 plan. But to me, I think you have to do that more because that's what makes us nod our head about, yeah, that feels right or not.
You know, I, I think, I think most of this really gets down to really good planning. When a developer brings in a really professional landscape architect, he'll always bring in a landscape architect, and I'm a landscape architect, to squeeze as many units onto his land. But sometimes, and Warren is one person that said this years ago, if you fly over Dublin and you fly over Columbus, it's very obvious the difference. And the difference was really good architectural planning by a professional P and Z and a professional staff. Something I need you to think about that we sometimes forget is the setbacks. You know, we try to screen the backs of houses along roads with spruce trees. Well, those things have a 20 year life. Eventually the branches die out and you see them. What you got to do if you're on planning zoning is create mounding. And I think from 80 to 88 years, we allowed one apartment complex come to Dublin. It came, it attempted it for three or four years. By the time it was done, it had 14 foot mounds. You didn't need any planting on them. And if you drive along Brand Road, you'll notice that you can't see the apartment complex back there. It had a number of lakes. And those are the kind of things you want to strive for. You just don't, you know, nothing makes me sicker than the drive down a street where there's a row of houses on either side of the street. If you can't, if you're getting crazy and you're not doing your job, think about places at work. Muirfield has cul-de-sac. Muirfield has cul-de-sacs. I can tell you that I've watched two generations or three generations of people coming from their houses onto those green spaces, bringing out their grills, meeting each other. Those are public spaces. Okay? So that was planned by probably four different landscape architecture firms for Jack Nicklaus to create that kind of stuff. High-end thinkers that understand land use and understand. So, you know, ideas, oh, you, you can do, you can do conservation design and cluster houses, but you can customer. On the holidays and bring out their grills and have a good time. But, you know, I look at these zonings and I have to laugh.
You're really kicking up here.
I can't hear him at all.
Hello, can I, can you hear me? I think so far everything's been well said. I think it's both materials.
Developers do when they come in trying to beat you down and beat you down. No, just say, hey. Your design is terrible. We just had one come in last week to, to city council and it was, it was, it was beyond pathetic and didn't hardly deserve any comment.
John, we're, we're having a hard time.
Other units on the land, do they radiate around so you? A bunch of landscaping because the way the houses are arranged, they actually do the screening themselves and they all have different views out the back. But if you line them up in a box grid, you got yourself a mess. And, you know, so the thing I'm asking you or telling you or. And then increase the life of the people. So that's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Can I say something or not?
Yeah, go ahead, Warren.
I, I think that everybody, including Rebecca and, 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 and everybody that's talked, has made excellent points, really excellent points. But I think it takes everything. And once you give, by the way, and once you give away the green space, it's gone forever. Okay? And, and what I, John quoted, I said was, when I, I took flying lessons out of Don Scott, and I used to fly over Dublin and Columbus and the density from the air is really, really amazing that, that Dublin makes you feel good with the green space and so on. And, and, and we don't want to lose that. But I think the, the point that was made about quality materials, it, it is, is, is just as important. And I think Rebecca, you said a great, or somebody said, maybe it wasn't you, that said, thin doesn't look as good as thick. Okay? And, and maybe that was, who was that that said that? But, 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 but it, but it's true. And I, I don't talk about cases that are still impending, but, but I can remember somebody brought out some, some really quality, quality developments by a, a developer and, and looking at the one we were looking at and, and there was no comparison. So I think that, 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 that we have to be, and I think Rebecca's talked about Muirfield, maybe John did, about Muirfield, the patio homes. Okay? And, and, and they've got stone walls, they've got brick, they've got not just landscaping, but the way they're placed where nobody looks into anybody else's windows, where there's green space all around them, and yet they're on 50-foot lots. Okay? So I, 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 I think, but they're, yet they're, the whole development is surrounded by green space. So I think that, that all these things we've talked about are really important. And, and I, I, I said at last meeting that this P and Z is working awful hard and they're awful good. It's one of the best ones that, that, that I've been on. And, 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 and I, I think we're going to work just as hard on that. And I think that, that, that we realize that once it's done, it's done. And, and, and I don't think that, that, that economics should enter into it. If you can't afford to build that development in Dublin, then you can't afford to build it. Somebody else will come and build something else. So, and, and I think that, that they say what people want, well, we know now from this testimony we had today about variances being had, that people do want a place to put their grill in the back and, and, and they do want green space. And, and, and I'm sure when they looked at that lot, the realtor didn't say, oh, by the way, you can't build back here. Okay? Okay? You can't put your grill back here. I, I'm, I'm sure that wasn't mentioned. So I, I, I think we can do even a better job, but I think we're, we're doing a darn job, John, I think we are. I think that, that there are some mistakes and there have been mistakes over the years. But I think that we, 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 we have to forget about economics and affordable housing. We, we want affordable housing, but $450,000 to me is not affordable housing and, 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 and on, on small lots with no green space. So I think if, if we can build something for $450,000 and have lots of green space and, and, and all those quality things like we saw at a recent meeting that, that somebody brought to it and had the, took the initiative to look it up and show it to us, I think we're going to be better off. And I think that this meeting is very valuable to me. I'm, I'm so glad to hear from everybody.
In the interest of time, looking back to council for discussion on open space. So where our most recent applications have been, they, they've met the requirement. I won't even say they've met code, I've met, I'll say they've met the requirements, but the pushback quite a bit on B and Lu because we want to see open space within these developments. But are there minimum standards that council really looking for? And I won't even, I'll throw out minimum standards. Are there standards that council is looking for when we have these developments that have minor areas of open space where the vast majority of it is consumed by stormwater management and that sort of thing?
I think you got to remember that a retention and detention basin is not open spaced. And they seem to want to throw that in their categories if they're giving us something. Now, open space is common ground cleverly used by the evidence of those structures. So, you know, I, it's almost, these have these retention basins. By the time they run the strip down the road, the setback, if you look at these plots, they're pathetic. They run a strip down the road and that's some of their green space. No, that's a setback. That's not green space. That is required setback, but they count it as a setback. Then they throw in a couple ponds or retention or detention basins and say, oh, no, that's an engineering requirement. Hello, that is not, you're not giving us anything there either. So now let's move on to the real green space. So, and that's how you treat them because, you know, hey, I know how this deal works. I've been on the other side of the table. I know what architects and landscape architects are paid to do. And that is cheering out as many lots and squeeze them in, in a parcel as best they possibly can. Your job is to take that thing and dissolve it, restructure it, redesign it and make it like a place that you'd want to live at and be with your children so that a woman could push her baby carriage down the street and within a short piece of, short walk, find a park or pocket park or a neat place for a family to play at. And, you know, those are the kind of things you're building into this. I still hope we still have the requirement where you have to give so much percentage of your land up for, for a park system. I hope that's still part of the deal because I think that was written in the early eighties. And so, I mean, those are the kind of things, you got to put yourself in these units and say, do I want to live here? And then back to what Chris said and Warren said, the materials and the roofing and the architecture has got to be so exquisite, you got to, you got to say, that's damn cute or that's damn clever or that's really a neat design. I think this house is awesome. And those are the kind of things every one of you should be thinking about. And that's what, you know, how you approach these, these zonings.
Great. Thanks, John. I, I'm very cognizant of the time here, so I'm, I'm helping Jenny out here a little bit too. So Rebecca, we'll, I think there's been several topics here that we'll, that we'll take back. And as we move forward, the planning staff, we'll see if there aren't things, I, I know it's hard to do the checklist thing, but to put, to put some of those guidelines around there and, and really sort of document the discussion we've had tonight because I think there's, there's quite a few of very, very important and interlocking points that all of you brought up together. So we'll, we'll work on that. Before we ask Jenny to share a little bit on the Dublin 2035 Plan and your important role in that, council asked that, you know, each of the groups bring forward, you know, a couple items, but we do have a couple other moments. And one of the things that I would like to ask the group, if you would please, and particularly those of you that haven't, haven't shared yet some thoughts this evening, you know, this has been a, this has been a tough way to, to, to have meetings. It's been an, an interesting way to engage because of the, the COVID realities that we've been living through. Are there a couple other thoughts or considerations or things that this is, you know, we don't have much time together, that you'd like to put forth or get some feedback from, from council before we move ahead? Would sure appreciate your thoughts. Observations?
So Kathy, I don't know if it's feedback as much as I'm generally going to say, John, Kathy, Chris, every time we hear you foment about, right, protecting and really pushing back on some of these things, I think it's really fruitful for everybody on this, on this call, ARB, B and, B and Z, P and C alike. So, so this group or the next, the next series of commissioners like us, by all means, continue to do that because it is fruitful and helpful to understand. If I'm saying anything relative to some of the, some of the concerns on behalf of my fellow commissioners, be it any of those boards, I still, I still worry that what it is, is folks are clamoring for the weapons, arming themselves in order to push back on some of these things. Chris, you started articulating be specific. As, as one of the few sort of designers, architects on this, on this entire group, I, I know that there, the specifics are sometimes hard. You can say one thing and it can be misinterpreted, right? There, there are very few absolutes. By the way, Chris, I do, I do very much like the architecture and dying the sword of architectural materials. That is, that is fruitful. So, so when you're on the dais and sort of articulating to, to an applicant, sometimes being specific with those, with those comments are hard. And, and I worry that especially if we do not collectively have a really robust, robust and deep, uh, deep literacy, like John clearly does, right? Some of that literacy would be, would be the armor we would have in order to articulate back. And so this is just, this is just an advocacy generally on that commentary, that as we continue, I think everyone would, would agree, we can continue to, to foster and understand what training looks like for us in order to make the entire group, top to bottom, left to right, really, really strong, really, really literate in order to articulate these stances and push back on anything that comes in our way.
Guys, I think something makes your job really fun. Wait a minute, something makes your job really fun and I, is when you think about great neighborhoods in America, there's some in Chicago and they were done in the 1890s by Olmstead. There's some done, you know, they're in different parts of our country. And they're fabulous neighborhoods. They were done in the twenties, the tens, and it's where everybody still wants to live and be part of. And so then what makes your job fun is to study those neighborhoods. Why are they successful after 100 years, 150 years? And why do people want to live in them? And your mission is create those neighborhoods in our community, one after another, not to accept some plan that some guy brings in on his 40 acres and pretend it's a real project. It's not a real project. You have every right to say, no, take this piece of crap out of here and come back with a real design that's really meaningful for people. We used to be accused of being elitists and we told the two biggest zoning firms, Harrison Smith and Ben Hale, that you can put 100,000 people on one acre of ground in Dublin, but you better have a play center in that high rise for the children. You better have all the amenity people need to be. Community or don't bring it in here. So, and get it out of here. So that's your approach to running P and Z, BCA and every other thing. Build the communities that are going to be successful in the next 150 years that people are going to clamor to get into. And that's what you should be thinking about. And that's why your job is so damn much fun because you're building those communities. And you've got, you, you can't be weak. You got to be able to say, no, take it out of here because it's not good enough for this community. And that's the name of the game.
Thanks, John. So we have time for probably one more point before we turn it over back to Jenny to talk about 2035. Other thoughts? Thank you for that, Mark.
Yeah, real quick, I'm just gonna kind of piggyback on what John said and I guess respond to what Mark said. City council stands behind you. And we have a great deal of respect for you and, and your fellow commissioners, the hard work that you do. We know you're putting yourselves in very hard, difficult positions. Your meetings go hour after hour. You work very, very hard, all the, all the commissions do. We greatly appreciate the time you put into our community and we stand behind you.
Thanks, Andy.
I agree with it. They got the toughest, they have the toughest job in this community. They absolutely do. They and the planning department, and I think the planning department has the toughest and P and Z has the next toughest job. So yes, that is a very, and we do stand behind you and we appreciate the kind of effort and work you're putting into it to make our community great. So thank you.
All right, Jenny, since you have the hardest job, talk us now about the 2035 Plan.
Okay. So yeah, quick overview of that. So as I mentioned, council goal for 2020 added the 2035 framework, which was, I'm looking at that forward-thinking vision of where do we want to be in 2035 and what, what changes, what things do we need to be focusing on? And how does that dovetail with the existing community plan that was last updated in 2013? So at the end of last year, staff sort of did an analysis that analyzed the existing plan and, you know, what things needed to be updated. We have been monitoring and making updates as we need to, but we really need to look at this a little bit more holistically. And again, just make some tweaks and some modifications to that existing plan and, and the creation of council goal to look at that 2035 vision really dovetailed really well with that. So we have taken council's goal and taken that initial analysis and laid out a path and a framework for moving forward with the update of the 2035 Plan. And we had a kickoff meeting with council in August where we really looked at and, and discussed this initial path and what that might look like in terms of council involvement, whether it's, you know, the whole of council, council committees, staff involvement, as well as boards and commission input and public input and how to fit all those pieces together when updating our existing plans. So we had a most recent discussion with council where we, we looked at and talked about, you know, what, what makes Dublin successful and then also what, what are we looking for in the future and what are we focusing on? And really helping council form what those guiding principles are going to be as we take on this project. And we are working on a report out to council here that summarized that initial discussion that we had a couple months ago and outlining again what those principles are. So following that report out to council, we will then begin sort of undertaking this exciting process of 2035 and engaging all of you in that process. And, you know, additional council input is going to be needed to set the stage and understand how each of you will be fitting into that. But I think staff's anticipation is that you would have an active role. There's going to be many pieces and parts to this and, and how we bring that forward either to you all as individual groups or as part of council discussion is, is yet to be determined. But just want you all to be aware that this is, you know, is being undertaken here in the next year or so. And it's going to be a really great process to be looking at all these individual pieces and parts, land use, quality of life, economic, fiscal impacts, as well as infrastructure. So it touches every single group here and every single group and division within the city. So it's, it's again, looking at that existing base of the community plan and looking at where does that, where do we want to move that in 2035? we want to move that in 2035? So once we have more information and we get some more feedback from council, then we'll, we'll bring that forward and present that to each of you or and/or share the memo that, you know, we share with council so you can all be kept, kept apprised of where we are with this exciting process that we're undertaking.
Hey Jenny, do you have the process diagram to share at all?
I do.
I, I think it would be, I, I just think it's a helpful visual. I'm visual. So, you know, maybe that's just me. But I think it's a helpful visual for us, maybe just to spend a couple minutes on, because I heard a lot of things tonight about what are the principles? What are the specifics? Land use, density? And I, I think the visual is helpful if you can bring it up.
Yeah. And I have the, here that sort of shows, and this is our sort of more, shoot, now I gotta go through everything. Sorry. Again, just showing how this may potentially lay out. And this is again, our more updated version, which we're still finalizing, but I think it helps set, set the tone and maybe what you're, you're speaking of.
A little time on this. Thank you.
Sure, sure. So again, as I indicated, we're looking at, you know, beginning to adoption and all the pieces that fall in between here. So on the far left side of your screen is that kickoff and sort of council education committee discussion that we had back in August, which then led to some further council staff visioning that we had in the fall and winter of 20, of this past year, 2020, which included an opportunity for council and staff members to virtually take part of the world city conference. So council members and staff members were assigned different courses, if you will, and, and to watch those and to present those ideas and takeaways from that and, and bring that forward for discussion as part of this retreat workshop that we had here in November. And then that helped bring, bring forward and bring to light the, the development of the framework and then establishing those guiding principles. So as I mentioned, staff is summarizing those and the outcomes of that meeting and, and really turning those into these guiding principles for council to then review and sign off on here in upcoming meeting. But, but from that and the next steps are moving into this graphic, which really talk about, you know, how we'll engage staff and staff's input and leaning forward on what those look like, but then also establishing what we're looking at as a theme community workshop. So if you see this multicolored graphic here on the, on the right side, that is the pink quality of life, blue land use, yellow infrastructure, green economic, which is all then sort of in the governed by the vision and goals for the city. Our anticipation would be for those themed, themed committees would, would be council committees that then each are assigned one of these four boxes that, that coincide then with the four council committees and then board and commission members and staff members would be brought in as needed to consult and talk through and educate and formulate vision, you know, as we're looking forward and, and developing these modifications to the plan. So, and then you'll see another important box within this graphic here in the center is the public validation piece of this and the public inputs piece of that. So definitely have a need for and desire for public input as well along the way. So again, it's meant to be very iterative in terms of how we're bringing this forward and working, working that through sort of the council, board and commission staff process. And then ultimately the outcomes of that will be, you know, developing a draft and the adoption of a community plan here. Again, the timeframe for that is, is definitely over, you know, over a year plus timeframe, just given that it takes a while to make all these pieces and parts come together and checking in and through that. And we're working on a schedule for what that looks like to keep us on target and, and make sure that we're accounting for all the pieces and parts that council is directing us to, but that also the boards and commissions are as well. And then you'll see at the bottom parts, sort of concurrently, staff is doing a lot of the administrative pieces of this. So, you know, technical information, demographics, inventory. So sort of that background work that is very numbers, statistics oriented. But again, will be brought forth as part of this, but we're, we're working on that on our end as well. So all these pieces, again, it's, it's really a big, a nice big cycle because everyone will be working on their different pieces and parts. And then they'll, they'll be dovetailing in and out of the review process as we move forward with it. Anybody have any questions about, about that?
So thank you, Jenny. Um, you know, it is interesting. People are saying you're embarking on this during what has been a challenging period, but what an interesting time to embark on a 2035 plan when many things that we thought about and some that we talked about, about how people want to live. Boy, what, what a time for questions. What a time for thinking differently. What a time for really acceleration of technology. So it's going to be exciting. So probably the next time we have a session like this together, we're going to be, have our sleeves rolled up and we're going to be working together on, on pieces and parts of this 2035 plan. So it's not as easy in this time, but maybe this is the best of times to be able to, to kick this off. So we look forward to that. So we are just sort of at the conclusion here and I, I wanted to on behalf, and I know the council, other council members are going to want to add their, their thoughts here. And just wanted to say thank you so, so much for all of your time, all of your investment, all of your hard work. And clearly from all the comments tonight, just how sincerely you care about this community and making sure this is going to be a, a hundred year community, as John said. So the place everybody wants to live. Jenny was kind enough to pull together some statistics for us, just because if you're not tired enough, we're going to tell, show you a little bit about how hard you actually worked this year. So she, she pulled some stats together for you. So it's a good thing we're all sitting down. So Jenny.
So yeah, we thought it would be fun to sort of look at the, that you've done over the years and I'll just talk through it real quick. Total number of meeting hours that between BZI, ARB and planning commission spent was 97 hours. So you could have flown around the world twice in that time for your own edification. In terms of agenda items, you've seen 147 amongst the three boards this year. So you've all been very busy reviewing all the applications. You've also been provided over 1,029 pages of staff reports, which you could have read War and Peace, Anna Karenina, Don Quixote in that, in that timeframe. So pick any one of those. And the, the last thing is just your total number of meetings. It's 46 meetings between the three of you. So it's again, a lot of work and effort on all of your parts. And just to echo what Vice Mayor DeRosa said, I mean, we really appreciate all of your support and it doesn't go unnoticed, the amount of time and effort you all spend preparing for these meetings and, and helping us, you know, execute and create this amazing city that we all either live in, work in or work in. And just appreciate your time and support of staff. And again, flexibility of Zoom meetings and all of the things that we've, we've worked through with you all. You've all been amazing. So thanks for making our job really great. Appreciate it.
I just want to say again, how much we appreciate all the hours, as Jenny pointed out, all the hours that, that you dedicate. I feel like we have a really loaded team right now. I sat on ARB for about a year and a half. I've been through several P and Z meetings, just as a, as an observer, if you will. And I'm just extremely impressed with all of our commission members, the knowledge that you have, the expertise, how you can challenge applicants. But, you know, saying, saying no isn't, we don't always want to say no. We want, we want to work with residents to make things happen. And you find a very, you're very good at balancing those, those responsibilities. So again, thank you for all your time and everything that you do for the city.
You know, I'd like to say a huge thank you. I, I sit on planning and zoning, but I've been on ARB and I, I know I've watched their work. It's not only the work that you do every week. It's the work that you put into trying to make the process better. You're working on code rewrites, you're creating guidelines, you're talking about processes, you're, you're training, you're reading, you're, you're asking questions. You're much more deep than simply hearing cases. And I think that's what makes this whole group of you so wonderfully professional and such an asset to the building of Dublin and, and in the architectural review board area, the, the maintenance of our history and our roots. And as for the board of zoning appeals, I haven't had a chance to sit with you, but I know that you end up seeing the good and the bad parts about what comes down after commissions have ruled. So I just, I can't thank you all enough for all the time that you give and all the energy that you put into it and all the conversations and all the deep study and your interest and love for the community is evident in every meeting that you come to. And so thank you and I hope you have a wonderful new year.
Thanks. Likewise, I thank you all. Maybe, maybe even more so because unlike some of my colleagues, I have not sat on any of your boards or commissions. And so the things that you guys all have to go through blow my mind because it is not sort of in my bailiwick, if you will. So I really appreciate the level of dedication that you bring so that those of us who don't have the experience on planning and zoning or BZI or ARB can still understand where you're coming from and what you're talking about and what you're talking through. I find reading through your dialogue to be extraordinarily helpful to me. And I know that that sounds like a cure for insomnia for some people, but for me, it provides me that context. So continue having those conversations and talking things through. It helps me understand where you all are in your decision-making process. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you do because without those conversations and without reading through the work that you do, I would be completely lost. So thank you so much, everyone.
I too would just like to thank you and that your city appreciates you. And just like to suggest to you that the reason you love your community the way you do is because somebody sat in your chair before you and did the hard work it took to make it be a place. And so I would just ask you to be that person that creates a place that's worthy of nations to love and be a student of the game. Everywhere you go and every, every place you visit, drive your family crazy and look at every work or what, or what makes it great or what could make it better. And just be a student of the game.
Thank you all. And before we adjourn off to exactly on time for our, to enjoy our holidays, we have one member here that is going to term limit out here come March. And I wanted to send a sincere congratulations and thanks to our Chair Cooper, who is going to say on to the next big adventure and hand it off to somebody. But thank you, thank you, thank you for leading, for, for all that you have done. We're sorry there's term limits in your case. You've done a wonderful job. You're muted.
Place to live and it's been my pleasure to serve.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you very much. Welcome 2021. We'll see you next year. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I think the council speakers need to stay on this call.
Yes, that's cool. That's
Are we staying on this one or aren't we, we're entering a different?
Adjourn this meeting and go to executive session. So yeah.
Okay.
Great. And even though we're a few minutes earlier, Anne, there's no problem to start that now. Is that correct?
Jennifer, is there any party that's impacted by doing so? I don't see that there is.
Yeah, we can go in early. We just need to make the motion to go into executive session for pending or in litigation.
We're calling to order this special meeting and then having a break.
So can I make the motion that we move to executive session to talk about litigation?
Chris has the action.
I'll second that.
Mary Amaro Scrums.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Ludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay. And then you will go and join the other meeting that you have from Jenny Delgado.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks.